All right, it's all yours.
All right, Mayor, if you are, if you're ready, if you want to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Well, let me thank everybody for coming in on this public hearing on July 14th, 7:00 PM, and thank you all for for being here this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Bob, to call the role of our speakers. Let me ask you a question. Would our speakers tonight have three minutes each?
Yes, and Mayor, we'll do the roll call of the members first, and then we'll go to the speakers.
Right.
Again, yes.
I'll let you do that, Bob. I just want to, just wanted to welcome everybody to our session tonight. And we'll see what our citizens can do in helping us spend cares recovery money. Thank you all for your work and, and commitment to this process. It's a very important one, and I've heard a lot of people talk about some ideas they had. So it should be an informative session. So, Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, and again, if you, if you'll, microphone's muted until actually we call you, and then if you'll unmute, and just indicate whether you are present or not. And this is for the members. So as I call your name again, if you'll just identify if you're here. Elda Stanko Downey. Minyon Chobhale.
Here.
Thank you. Sorry, I need to be able to keep track of this. Jankeeter.
I'm here.
Thank you. Bethany Lackey.
Here.
Of course, Mayor Lee.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Chanel Steelman. Antonia Segovia.
Here.
Cynthia Lawrence. Karen Pillis. Debbie Brown.
Here.
Thank you. Abby Hamper.
I'm here.
Thank you. Brenda Hippo.
Here.
Diane Haley. Brian Wells.
Here.
Thank you. Ellen Stick.
Here.
Rachel Hopkins. I know I saw Rachel. Landon Howard.
Here.
Shalene Powell.
I'm here.
Tommy Page.
Here.
Kat Pascal. Nathan Webster. Troy Cook.
Here.
Tamia Franco.
Here.
Joyce Wall.
Here.
James Smith. I thought I saw James on there, but.
Here.
James here, okay, sorry. Jerrell Rhodes.
Here.
Cheryl Mosley. Cheryl. Carol Tarrant.
Here.
Andrea Micklin.
Here.
Kristen Bryant.
Here.
Pamela Smith. Carol Rallett.
Here.
Pete Eschelman.
Here.
Joshua Patrick. Gloria Mann. Brianna Wilson. And I already got Chris Bryant, right? Okay. Did I get Chris Bryant, as well as Christian Bryant? There's two.
You didn't call my name, but I'm here, Chris Bryant.
Thank you. Wanted to make sure I got both of you. Is there any, any one of the members that I did not call?
I'm here, Rachel Hopkins, I'm here. I just didn't hit the mute, unmute button, I apologize.
No problem, thank you, thank you. And what about Cheryl? I thought I saw her, but Cheryl Mosley. All right. Yeah, Mayor, you do have a quorum.
All right, great. Well, you want to proceed, Bob, but just having a clerk call, call names?
The, let me, the, the next two items on the agenda, Mayor, are actually just really quick overview for the, the folks that are joining us. If I can just run through that real quickly, and then we'll go to the, to the folks to speak, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine.
And for the task force members, I'm sorry, this is a bit of a repeat, but I'll try to be very quick with this as I can. But this is really for those of you that have signed up to speak, just so you have a little more background regarding the, the objective of the recovery fund, the role of the task force, and the process that we've used so far. So the, the objective of the recovery fund is, the city has identified funds, money, to be used to support the, the local community in its recovery from COVID, and to be able to build further resilience as we move forward in that recovery. And in addition to that, the funding available, the council felt it critical to involve a cross-representation of diverse perspectives from the community to advise them on ideas and recommendations of how to use best those recovery funds. So they established the task force, which consists of 36 people. All, many of you have heard introduced here today, and it is chaired by the mayor and the vice mayor. And we have met three times, and will meet for a fourth and final time tomorrow as a group. And what they're doing, again, is working through ideas for what those funds could be used for, and then ultimately, we'll make a. What they're hearing, again, is working through ideas for what those. Somebody, somebody. Phone on, if you would mute. So everybody, everybody make sure you're muted, please. All right, thank you. And the, so what, again, the group has met three times. And out of that, so far, what they've done is identified a large number, actually, probably 50 or 60 different possible initiatives or projects, which were, have been available up on the website. And for those of you that I had email addresses for that have signed up to speak, I sent you a file that showed that same information. In addition to identifying those priorities, I'm sorry, those initiatives, they also began kind of prioritizing those. So they took those roughly 50 or 60, and got those down to about 20 kind of priority items. And that's just kind of where they are. But at this point, they wanted to pause so that they could hear directly from members of the community about any other ideas that might be out there that could, could possibly be used for this. The last thing I will say, because this is important as we consider kind of what we can work on as we go forward, is that there are several buckets of funding that are a part of this effort. One of those buckets is about a half a million dollars of city economic development funds, which is probably the most readily available dollars, doesn't have as many restrictions attached to it. The largest amount of money, which is a little over $5 million, is actually associated with the Congressional Cares Act, and is restricted both in what it can be used for, which is to respond to costs directly related to COVID, and has to be spent by the end of this year. And we received those dollars on June 1st. So that was when we actually took, took receipt of those dollars from the, from the state, really from the federal government through the state. There are two other sources of funding. One through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and one through, or through the ESG program. Those also are fairly limited, but what they are identified for is for small business assistance with the CDBG. And in the ESG, it is to avoid homelessness, basically. So those are, those are funds that are available, but they're fairly, fairly restricted. So those are our buckets of money, if you will, that we have available. And, and that's what we're trying to fit kind of ideas and initiatives into. So with that, a quick overview of kind of where things are, I will remind the task force that the purpose of the public hearing and the purpose of rest of this meeting is really to hear from the community. So we won't be like our normal meetings, unlike our normal meetings, we won't be engaging any, any further discussion. What we'll do is take in this information, we'll record it, and then tomorrow, when we meet, we'll be talking about it. So at this point, it really is just so we can open it up for the public, hear from them. And, and then at the end of that, Mayor, we'll come back and talk about next steps. So if, if you are, if you are ready, Mayor, we will go ahead and begin taking the, the public comment. And just as a reminder again, for those that are going to speak, we ask that you limit your, your time to three minutes.
Yes, sir, we're ready.
All right, very good. Then I will ask Susie to call the, the first name, and then we'll have the person come in.
Okay, our first speaker, we have 15 speakers. Our first speaker is Mike McAvoy. Mike, you can go ahead.
Good evening, every, everyone on the committee. Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me here tonight. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just in favor of utility assistance, allocating some of the money for helping customers of the Western Virginia Water Authority with their water and sewer bills. I am, again, my name is Mike McAvoy, and I'm the Executive Director of the Western Virginia Water Authority, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. And I just want to share a few data points with you right now. The authority stopped doing service disconnections for people that were behind on their bills in mid-March. Since that time, the number of people who have fallen behind has risen. As of June 30th, we have approximately 910 custom, residential customers that are behind on their bills. This number's growing about 150 accounts per month. Approximately 700 of those accounts are in the city of Roanoke. Total past due amount is about $215,000. And about the average past due amount per residential account is $200. Currently, we have a program with the city's central intake office on bill assistance, and we want to continue that. And maybe, again, we're asking for an allocation of the Cares Act money to kind of booster that, boost that program. And we think between what we can put toward it, through some of the funds that we have, and allocation of Cares Act money, we can kind of get a number of these 700 customers, you know, back, get their accounts down to manageable balances, and get them ready for the, the point when we would start doing service disconnections again. So we're asking for approximately $90,000. And I would point out that the, that Roanoke County is doing something similar, and they actually started their program on Monday. So you can contact county, if you're a county water authority customer, you can contact county social services. There's a form you fill out, there's some income requirements, and you can get some assistance with your water sewer bill through the county. And we're hoping to do the same thing, an enhanced program through the city's central intake. To Mr. Cowell, so you just know, we do think they'll, that may be put a load on central intake. So we've also talked to the Council of Community Services about possibly having them help implement this program as well. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Right.
Speaker number two, Fern Henley.
I was just trying to get unmuted, but simply, the, I would like for the urban forester people to have some money to hire more people to plant trees. Trees are so invaluable. They make our, our town look so beautiful, more beautiful, really, than in DC, where they have the cherry festival. Ours is beautiful. And so if some money could be allocated to hire more people for the urban foresters, because they have a volunteer staff, but they need really more money. So thanks, that's all.
Thank you.
First speaker, Lisa Callen.
Good evening.
Teresa Kelly, are you on the line? Okay, it seems that Teresa Kelly is not here, so we'll move on. The next speaker is Becky Sessin.
Good evening, Ms. Sessin. Hello, are you there?
Okay, we'll move on. I don't see Ms. Sessin, so we'll go to Matthew Hodges.
Good evening, Mr. Hodges. Hello.
Okay, we'll move to the next speaker. That is Russell Hawkins.
Hello, Mr. Hawkins. Hello.
Okay, no, Mr. Hawkins. The next speaker is Valerie Angle.
Good evening, Ms. Angle. Hello.
Okay. We'll go to the next speaker. Adele Carles. Adele Carles.
Hello, Mr. Carles.
Ms. Carles.
Carles. Hello.
Okay, we're not having luck, but we'll move to the next one. It's Caitlin Lewis.
Hello.
No, no, Ms. Lewis. Laura Mason.
Hello, Ms. Mason. You think we may have some.
Oh, there's. Yes. This is Laura Mason. So the reason I'm wanting to join today, first, I want to thank you guys for working with the public and allowing us to, to have some input on what you're doing. And the second thing is, is I have a concern for the hairstylists or the gig workers in the area. There were a lot of people that, of course, were left behind in unemployment and then PPE. So I guess, you know, my question, for my small business, what happened was that it was better for me to go with the unemployment, but the business, my unemployment had to sustain both the business and me personally. And so, you know, I had brought this up in one of the other meetings, and, you know, the comment that they said that I made is that, basically, that my unemployment went to a business also that had lower revenue, but there was no revenue, like it was zero revenue. And so the business still had to be sustained out of my pocket. So, you know, I'm also at a, a huge concern that we're going to go back through another shutdown. And so I guess sustainability in the future and just recovery are, are both my concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you too, sir.
The next speaker is Karen McNally.
Hi, this is Karen McNally. I'm the Executive Director of the Presbyterian Community Center in Southeast Roanoke. And I think your priorities, as I've looked at them, cover our concerns, but I just want to let you know what we're thinking our way. I think our biggest thing right now, we're worried about, is that we have an after-school program for low-income families. And as we await to see what Roanoke City Schools are going to do, we want to assist and complement their scheduling, keeping the kids in our program as much as we can. And I know that for us, purchasing PPE and possibly having to pay for additional hours for our employees will be a big concern of ours. And the other thing that we are concerned about is, once the cutoff for utilities and that our financial aid that we provide for families in northeast and southeast Roanoke is going to be stretched tight, so, and I see where, where that's covered in your priorities. So I just want to reiterate the concern we have, that we're going to be inundated with requests once the cutoff notice is started again. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Huff.
Hello, Jay.
We'll move on to Karen Van Buren.
Hello, Ms. Van Buren.
We'll move on to Antoinette Bean.
I'm here, good, good evening. My proposal, or what I would like to see, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, what I would like to see is the, the old, the Salem, right here. Oh, gosh, I can't even think of it. The Salem Plaza to be turned into a family recreation center. For example, just like they have Green Ridge, to have one here in Northwest that would accommodate having different things there for families. That's something that I was hoping, you know, that some money could be allocated to. Or, and/or having difference, adding more shops on Marrows. It's, for example, Subway and different eateries on Marrows. And that's all I have. But I do want to thank you for at least letting me enter the meeting and giving my voice to ideas.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next speaker is Jimmy Malum.
Hello, Mr. Malum.
Let me, let me go back through the list, maybe someone has tuned in now. I'll go back to those ones who I announced that did not come in, and let's see if they're there still, or maybe. Teresa Kelly. Becky Sessin. Matthew, Matthew Hodges. Russell Hawkins. Valerie Angle. Adele Carles. Caitlin Lewis. Jay Huff. Karen Van Buren. And Jimmy Malum. Thank you.
Mayor, also, I noticed on the, on the list, Janine Underwood is on the list. She wasn't on our list for signup, and I wanted to give her the opportunity that if she's on and she's live, Janine, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the, to the comments?
Welcome, Janine.
That'd be great.
I don't know. Yeah, Janine, we're, Janine, we're not, you're. Yeah, we're not able to actually hear you, Janine. You're, you were breaking up. All right, actually went away. All right, well, we'll follow back up with Janine. Mayor, what I, what I would suggest, since we had so many folks that signed up that did not actually join us, what I will do before the meeting of the task force tomorrow is I will reach out to each of these individuals again, and just see if they had anything that they wanted to provide via email so that we can ensure that they've had that opportunity. And Janine just popped back in, so let's see if her, her coverage is any better. Janine, you want to try again?
Yeah, Bob, can you hear me?
Yep, that's perfect.
Oh, great, great. Thank you all, sorry about that. I, I really wanted to be on the call to kind of hear what some of the other proposals, what everyone in the community was contributing, and what proposals were being made, and what they need is overall. What we're seeing at the clinic is a large number of patients that were registering new patients, which means there's a lot of individuals out in the community that are uninsured. And they're starting to sign up at the clinic for their health care. One of the areas that we're, can you all still hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. One of the areas that we're having a difficult time being able to provide dental services. We've lost a lot of our volunteer dentists. You know, they're all trying to rebuild their, get back into their practices, and it's very difficult for them to find the time to volunteer at the clinic. And we're seeing such a huge need. We already had a huge need for dental services in the community, but now we're seeing it more than ever. But, so I kind of wanted to give you an idea of the activity going on at the, at the Bradley is it, we really didn't skip a beat. We've stayed open the whole time. We've had a, really, a great source of the volunteers that are coming to the clinic. We've been able to utilize them to provide the medical services we needed. But we really would like to see funding put aside, definitely for dental services, if possible.
Thank you, Janine. And for those, I think most of you probably know Janine, but just in case you don't, she's with the Bradley Free Clinic.
Thank you, Bob.
No, no problem, thank you. Mayor, so that, that is all of the folks that had signed up. And again, I will follow up individually with those that we called who had indicated a desire to participate, but for some reason did not join us, just to ensure that they have that chance to provide those comments. And so for the task force members, again, we will, we will meet tomorrow at our appointed time as scheduled. And what we'll do is, we will review the information that you all have been asked to provide for, by tomorrow's meeting. Some of you have already done so, so I appreciate that. And also, obviously, we'll talk about any changes or any adjustments in any of the priorities based on what you have heard this evening, or what I may find from some of these other folks that were unable to join us as well. So with, with that, Mayor, that is all of the items, I believe, that we have on, on the agenda.
All right. Well, thank you, Bob, thank you, our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, and thank everybody. And thank everybody for coming out. And so this session will adjourn, and we'll meet tomorrow at eleven A M. Thank you and good night to everybody.
Thank you all.